I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll?
Squeaking the end.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Comey?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Urdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Comer?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you all. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes in your pocket from our last regularly scheduled meeting of July 23rd. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Each of you should have also received a copy of our latest check register. If you can indicate whether or not you received that register. Thank you. Let's see, we've got a number of guests with us tonight in the form of various professionals, but they're pretty much on the front end of our agenda, so we'll just march through this as best we can. First thing we have, though, are public comments, and first to address the council is Frank Mason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Frank Mason. I own the property at 138 South Hamilton, which is occupied by Keystone Montessori, and the area is also used by the Montessori Experience. On the first photograph there, the red marker indicates that property at the corner of Constitution and South Hamilton. As you all know, we've had several flood situations in this past year. The second picture here, that was taken last week when there was about a 45-minute rainstorm. As you can see, it gets up rather high. Fortunately, as a result of some preventive measures that we've taken, the school did not flood. We were able to keep the water out of the building. However, the playground, which is used by about 80 students, was totally immersed again by several feet of water. The next picture shows our fence for the playground along Constitution. That's just the fence there. Then the next picture shows a street view, and it shows the little bit of curb that we have there. And then the next picture shows actually how tall that curb is. It's about an inch for the part of the road that it's on. The next six pictures are black and white, show all the parking lots on the other side of the street that are all sloped downward and all shedding water onto Constitution Avenue. The last black and white shows where the Constitution intersects with Mulberry, and I'm pretty sure, although I don't have proof yet, that a lot of water coming down Mulberry also enters onto Constitution. One of the first things I'd like to ask is that the city installs some curbs, appropriate curbs, along Constitution Avenue. They did this on College Street a couple of years ago, and that seems to have been effective in keeping water out of those buildings. And the asphalt's been built up and built up, and now the little bit of curb that's there isn't doing much good. Oh, there is no drain basin on all of Constitution Avenue. So you've got all these parking lots that are dropping water down there. There's no drain basin, no place for it to go. This one picture here shows the entrance for, the back entrance to the school where our parents drive through to drop off their kids. Since there's no way to prevent water from coming down that, I would also like to ask the city to install some kind of gentle speed bump on that, raising the level of that up about six, seven inches above the street level. Then the next-to-last picture here shows where the street's beginning to deteriorate along the edge. You can also see how minor that curb is there, but water's seeping down here, water's flowing there, and it's crossing across the sidewalk. And if you look at the last picture, that's looking down at the sidewalk. There is an empty cavity under here that is, the water's going down, it's washing it out, and eventually it is going to collapse, probably collapse that sidewalk or collapse the street. And it's my view that all this water coming down over the years got into the basements of those two historic homes that were on South Hamilton, which helped lead to the interior collapse of those two houses. So I thank you for your time, and I would like to ask for your directions as to how I can make a formal request for the curb and for some kind of speed bump to stop all that water from going down our little driveway.
Frank, I can answer part of that.
Okay.
I'm happy to have Eddie Hightowers here tonight, our city engineer, and happy to have Mr. Hightower evaluate the curb height. Sometimes as we pave streets, we mill the streets down to get an appropriate curb height back. The city has, in a prior administration, added to curb height. I'm willing to ask Eddie to evaluate that. Council's very unlikely to add a speed bump to substantially divert water off your back driveway, because that absolutely means we're diverting it to someone else, and I would think we're going to have to look at that very carefully.
That would divert it on down Constitution to South Hamilton and then to a drain basin that is on South Hamilton?
Well, as I say, that's something that we would look at very carefully before we divert that, but would be happy to have Mr. Hightower evaluate that curb height and then report back to me and the council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'll call your office or come by tomorrow. Is that all right?
Mayor.
Certainly.
I'm Michelle Hope, and I have the Montessori Experience, which backs up. I'm on College Street, but we share the parking lot and playground. And I just want to draw your attention to, this has happened at pickup time when the cars were in the parking lot and the children were coming out, and the water did get up to the windows of the parents' cars. So it's not that we're here complaining about the garden getting destroyed. We're worried about the safety of the people that we serve, so.
And we would like to help with drainage issues. It's a difficult stretch for me to put the council responsible for the children attending your school, but I do agree that we need to look at these drainage issues. One's reasonable, one's not.
That's what we're asking, is for you to look at it, feel like it's kind of been, like we're here just making complaints.
And Eddie, you might be able to help us understand if it seems that this Montessori building has had much more water runoff since the historic building next door was demolished? I'd like an opinion on whether that's contributing to this situation. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you.
Next on the public sign-in sheet is Mr. Stephen Price.
Thank you, council, and Mayor President. Allowed me to speak. As I said on the road on the piece of paper, I'm here to discuss two items that are, I think, currently are part of the agenda for this evening. Regarding the cemetery wall, I wrote a letter. I haven't sent it yet, but I wrote a letter to the news graphic, and I'll just read part of it. "The proposal from engineers is to demolish," or "There is a proposal, I understand, from engineers to demolish and replace rather than repair the west wall of the Georgetown Cemetery, which wall has obvious deteriorations but is largely in good condition, especially some 230 yards south of the cemetery gate on South Broadway. Georgetown has any charm or appeal remaining since displacement of local homesteading and farming by automobilism. It is in our pre-industrial, pre-automotive townscape, part of which is our present cemetery wall. Proposed see-through iron fence to replace the wall would cost big money and would decrease the privacy and the blockage of noise now provided to the cemetery by the present wall, especially south of the gate. That's not so much the case north of the gate, where the terrain rises above the wall, the height of the wall. But south of the gate, the wall completely blocks sound, or not completely, but largely blocks sound, and largely blocks the visual distractions along South Broadway. So if you tear down the wall, replace it with a see-through wall, you lose both the sound insulation and the visual screening provided by the current wall. A structural collapse of some 15 yards of the north wall could and should be replaced as soon as possible with blocks that fell out. Gene Cook told me he has all those blocks piled at the back end of the cemetery, the blocks that fell out, and they could be replaced into the gap. There may be a short place where the gap, where there's not enough blocks, they may have deteriorated. They could be remanufactured. It couldn't take more than a half dozen of them. They could be remanufactured by somebody who can make them look like the old ones. Such rebuild of the gap may require some manufacturer, few electors, I always said that, cost of which the rebuilding would obviously be far less than replacement of the entire wall. Some say the see-through fence would accommodate passing motors and cause them to drive into the cemetery for further viewing. I question, must even our cemetery bow to automobilism and its hurried drive-by misperception of the outdoors? Roots of nearby trees have caused the wall to collapse and have caused the wall to, that's where it fell out, roots of trees caused that. And in other places, the roots have caused the wall to tilt in several places. Ditching the east side of the wall would remove the tree roots. You don't want to cut out too many tree roots, or your trees will suffer, and then a ditch then would block the future encroachment of the roots to the wall and would facilitate repair of the tilted sections, possibly by simply pushing them or pulling them mechanically to a vertical plumb position. A person can use a come-along, it's called a come-long, which is a winch, or maybe a hydraulic jack, some kind of relatively low-tech equipment to simply push the wall back to Let's see. To accommodate the beautiful white oak tree, which is in the south wall, the wall doesn't need to be rebuilt there to go around that tree, because it is tilting due to the tree roots, and the wall would have to be rebuilt to go around that tree. What could be done with the money thus saved? If nothing else, we could lower taxes. That's what I had to say about the cemetery wall.
Thank you, Steve. You have another issue?
I'm sorry?
You have a second issue?
Yes, sir. I understand from my meeting last, I attended the fiscal court meeting, Mayor President, that you are pushing ahead with your plan to extend the sewer south to the Fayette County line to the trailer parks.
Yes, sir.
And I mentioned to you, I don't know if you read the paper, The Herald Leader, you can read USA Today, Wall Street Journal, New York Times, the main story this entire summer has been climate warming, and the impact that that's creating on the world landscape, drying the world landscape out and causing all these wildfires. What causes climate warming, according to everything I read, is carbon emissions from petrol fuels, mostly. And this plan you have to extend the sewer, Mayor President, I know it includes the possibility of one pump, forced main with an electric pump, and that electric pump emits, the coal that's going to be burned to make the electricity adds to this climate problem we have. I talked with the Sewer Service today, and they have, they all know how many pumps there are all over Georgetown, but all of those pumps require electricity. The electricity generation is what's causing climate change, and there is a passive, stationary means for treating home safety waste. It's called composting.
Steve, I'm not going to take the public conversation down that path. We are in a modern era. We have modern sewage disposal, and as a result of that, we have much less disease in our society. We are not going to talk about burying our solid waste in our own yards. It's not a solution that the city of Georgetown is going to embrace. We are going to seek a sewer line solution to this problem.
Mayor, and also he said that you are proposing, I think we as a council, it's not on your back, we are proposing it with you, so it's not you by yourself wants this done, okay?
Thank you. So Steve, that conversation, we're not going to even have that conversation. We're just not going to have that conversation.
Well, Mayor President, you can't oblige me to accept what people in white coats say, because I and my family have suffered a whole lot because of people in white coats and their opinions. And as I said the last time I was here, Dr. H.B. Johnson, who oversaw the Health Department in the beginning, he's quoted by Ann Bevins, Lindsey Apple, and Johnston in their book about Scott County, he said that there had been no greater controversy, no measure ever taken by government in Georgetown to which there was more opposition.
Steve, I don't disagree with your interpretation of history, but science has improved a lot in a hundred years.
You can believe that, won't you, Mayor President? I disagree.
Steve, we're through with this. This topic is finished tonight. Thank you. Mr. Craig Wink.
You may or may not know me. My name's Craig Wink. I work for the Scott County Fire Department. I've reached out to try to get ahold of everybody, and may not have got ahold of you, but here I am. I don't know if you've seen on Facebook, but they've got a lip sync challenge. A lot of law enforcement, I think I learned from the fiscal court the other day, it started three years ago, like in Israel or something, well, it's worked its way over here. And a lot of people that in emergency services have reached out to me and said, "What are you going to do?" Who's going to do it? Apparently, me. So I said, "What is everybody going to do?" And I said, "If I was going to do it, I'd use as many as we could." I guess it was a law enforcement starting issue, but then they're like, "No, they got some with firemen now." I was like, "Well, show me one." I was like, "Well, if we're going to do this, let's go big. Let's get everybody." So we come up with some ideas, talking with some of the guys. Here it is. It's Justin Timberlake, Can't Stop the Feeling. If you've seen the video, he's got different clips of, you know, a kid, waitress, truck driver, whatever. So I started talking to different entities, saying, "Would you be interested in this?" Like, "Absolutely. It's a great idea." And I said, "The concept would be to have the ability, since we have so many mutual organizations, and we work well with each other, city and the county, that's just what we do." So I started talking, like, "Who all could we use?" And it's got everything from, now this is people who are interested, Sheriff's Department, Dispatch, Toyota Fire Department, Georgetown Police Department, Scott County Fire, Georgetown Fire, the jail, Fish and Wildlife, they have some wrinkled PSPs.
Talking fish.
Well, there's some really good ideas that are out there, and if they get that permission, use it. Flight crew, what's the name of the flight? Flight Med? Arrow Med? Air Methods. They're on board, or interested as well. EMA, let's see, constables, stamping ground, cruisers, EMS, I think there's a total of 13, 14? Anyway, well, in talking to one of them, one of the individuals, they said, "Hey." At the very end of the song, he's like, "I'm not going to sing it, because I'm not going to embarrass myself anymore, but have an aerial view using the drone to come back, and you can see everybody, kind of like in a semicircle, and have an aerial view come up." And they said, "Hey, what would you do if we shut down Main Street?" And I was like, "You're going to shut down Main Street for this?" And they're like, "Why not?" They do it for a lot of other things. I was like, "I can go ask. I mean, all you can do is say no, right?" Which isn't a big deal. Come to find out, that is a fairly taxing thing, talking to the chief and assistant chief of police. So I was like, "Okay." I said, "Well, we've already got permission to use the county park, but how cool would it be to have that aesthetics, coming back and getting to see the courthouse downtown, just Main Street to Hamilton?" So that was the initial request to bring to you. If that doesn't work, it's not going to hurt my feelings at all, I promise you. It'd probably be a whole lot easier to do it out at the county park, but the view of it. And at the end of it, we're going to invite, with permission, and that's the other thing, we're going to invite everybody's family to be a part of it. So it shows that we work together in our entities, and then our families support us as we do it, and of course, there's a bunch of kids, like, "I want to do it. I want to dance in front of a camera." Cool, great. But I do need to make sure that I have permission. Number one is the question of whether Main Street could be shut down for a block of two hours. And the second question is, I need permission from the council to allow the city entities to allow their voluntary employees to do it. And when I say that, it's nobody's being made to do it, not paying anybody anything. I've already spent a month going through lyrics and saying, "Who gets to say what, do when, however they want to do it," and utilize one piece of apparatus from each one. That means one county fire truck, one city fire truck, one ambulance, one police cruiser, sheriff's cruiser, the helicopter bringing in, land it. So it's somehow spun out of control that I was trying to park everything that we have out here for a major production when we can't put them all the way down Main Street to my house without it wrapped around the corner. So that was the basic question of it. I'm here to basically ask the question for both. If you want to shut, if you think shutting down Main Street, oops, sorry about that. If you think that's a good idea, I'm on board with it. If you think that's too taxing, I completely understand, but if you're going to go do it, go big or go home, so.
Let me respond a little bit, since I've been in these conversations for some time now.
A couple weeks now, anyway.
You know, we've all seen some of these lip sync challenges come up on Facebook. It almost seems like it's passed now, but maybe it hasn't.
I'm not trying to let.
The concern that I've had, and I had a chance to, as soon as I spoke with Craig and understood that he had asked to be on the agenda, I got ahold of the police committee and I got ahold of the fire committee. Joke, you were at the countryside. Didn't bother you over there. And expressed my concern to those two council committees about the use of resources and the perception. And then I spent a lot of time with the chiefs of both the fire department and the police department and their leadership. And I can tell you that the leadership of these departments is concerned, I'll let them speak for themselves, but they are concerned about the perception of the use of resources. They're the ones that have to appear before me and the finance committee every year and defend their expenditures. They have to appear before the full council with their budget. And our chiefs have expressed concern about the perception of the use of resources. I share their concern and their reluctance. I do know the fiscal court voted to allow their groups to participate on a voluntary basis. It's also a little difficult for us when we talk about a voluntary basis. Andrew and I have done a deep dive into this question. If we authorize them to show up in uniform for a city sanctioned event with city equipment, they're not exactly volunteers, even if they're not being compensated. There's some endorsement here. It's kind of fine. I'm concerned about the use of resources and the way it looks, but we will follow the council's desire on this. But I felt that as the administration and as someone who's talked to each of the chiefs, I feel like I have to express their concern over the request. Is that fair, chiefs? So again, we'll follow council's direction, and we'll do whatever you wish, but I have to say this is a concern.
Well, it sounded like it's a very interesting thing that he wants to put on. It's not a financial gain for anybody, just a good time.
It's been, it's been very taxing on me emotionally, physically. I'm not sleeping. The wife is upset. I'm staying there, missed her anniversary. She was like, "I got to go do a video clip for practice," and she was like, "You forgot her anniversary." Went, "You sure did." So eBay, something shiny, click, bought it.
Supposed to shop local, sorry.
For shit. Sorry, babe.
What about the level of resources? Because maybe there's some question to that. Is it going to be everyone that's on duty that day? Is it just the volunteers that are off duty that would be coming?
Well, here's the hard part about it, and it's a logistical nightmare, because you're trying to get certain ones who want to do a part of it, but some can't do it until they get permission to do it, and then schedule that with the different shifts. You've got 24-hour shifts for the fire department, I think it's eight hours for PD, yeah? So you're, okay, so you're trying to mix and match who can be there, pick a date, pick a time, then you deal with weather and going, like, we go to the county park for the fair. We go and we show up. That's using our resources for the county, anyway, and we're there doing a service for the community. But we'll do Jake's Day, or we'll do when people show up and say, "Hey, my kid wants to see a fire truck. Come on, we'll take it out here and turn the lights on and what the water flows like." Totally trying to do it in a, again, not make anybody do it. There's no, like, "I need six guys to do this." And they're going to be like, "Yeah, I can't stop the feeling. You're right." No, it's not fun. And it's supposed to be a way for us to kind of let off some steam in a fun way and not be offensive. And there was another question, too, like, "What's this video going to look like?" Well, when it's done, it's not going to be posted. It'd be shown to everybody. In fact, with your permissions, if they do, if you do allow it to happen, when it's done, I'll bring it in here and play it for you. And if you like it, great. And if you're like, "Don't like that part there. Can we take that out?" Absolutely. It's going to be on a program. You point and click, and there it goes.
So I guess specifically, though, would it be for people that were on duty or off duty?
It'd be off duty. No, like, we have, at the county, we have a spare truck, so we can use that. We use it for training. We use it for whatever. It could be pulled out there and say, "Okay, whoever's off duty, we're going to be at this place at this time, and you guys do what you want to do." Now, if there's somebody who's on duty who wants to be a part of it, then we can schedule that to where maybe about somebody who doesn't want to be in it, you trade with him for an hour to get this done, and it usually doesn't take but half an hour to get all the clips together. But that final day, which is tentative the 25th, I think Saturday, to try to get everybody together, that's going to be a lot of fun.
So are you going to post it just on Facebook or YouTube or?
Yeah, probably. I would say the Facebook part end would be so that our friends and family get to see it in the community.
Is the plan to get this to go viral, to monetize it?
Just to do it and to say that I did it. I love a challenge, but this is probably the biggest one I've ever had.
But you know, if it goes viral and you monetize it, if somebody gets paid for it.
Oh, I wouldn't, if I had, if it was, never had anything go viral, so I couldn't begin to tell you what happens with that. How does that work? When your guys went viral, didn't they? I don't know. I don't know. If they, would they send me money or something? Is that what you're asking?
You can monetize it where you have ads played.
I wouldn't want it monetized. I wouldn't want a dime for it.
You get so many shows, you get paid for it, you know, from.
How about I make a donation if I got it?
I'm just trying, is there a plan to do that?
No, absolutely not.
Do we have a charity or something that would get the money?
If they said, hey, you did this video and you made X amount of dollars, I would probably take it, divide it in half and say, here's half that goes to city, here's half that goes to county. Cause I don't want any part of that, none of it. If that's even an option, I, I don't know.
I guess my question would be why the, I know, you know, you had said the different departments expressed the concern. What were the main concerns? Cause that's.
Chief Swanigan? Chief Ford?
Oh, no. I said, you know, I know the different groups, you know, the police and fire have expressed concerns. And I just kind of wanted to find out what your all's concerns were because you, you all will be working with it so closely. You know, I, I don't know how you're, you know.
Right. Craig came to us and proposed that Chief Ford was there, Chief Rossi was there, and I was there. Our, our biggest concern is closing Main Street is a, is a big undertaking. That would require manpower and resources to close that street. It's going to interrupt traffic. It's going to interrupt people's lives. It's going to interrupt businesses. It's a major undertaking and using tax dollars for something like that to, to accomplish that while we applaud his effort. I mean, we were a little scared about that, to be honest with you, we were. And it would take on duty personnel to do that. So I would have to pay officers that were on duty to block that street.
So you'd have to pull them off other things to block that street?
I would have to bring them in on overtime.
Oh, okay.
But if they went to the county park, do you?
Time and a half.
Yeah, if they went to the county park, we'd take volunteers. We'd put a sign up sheet up. If you're interested in participating in this, you can volunteer and go on your own time. But like Andrew and the mayor said, they're not really volunteers because they're in our uniform. So if something happens, they get injured, they twist an ankle with some kind of crazy dance move. Who's, uh, who's on the hook? Who's on the hook for insurance?
So that's the liability part of it. If vehicle gets damaged or it rolls over somebody, or if they get hurt while they're there, then the city's liable for that.
The original proposal, I think you're going to put a helicopter in the back parking lot.
If it was going to be on Main Street to be a helicopter.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of logistics to that.
Again, by you saying no to shutting down Main Street, you're not hurting my feelings. It was brought to me as an idea and if you've known me, I'm not afraid to come ask you. I'll, I'll be the first one to make a phone call or show up, but.
I told Craig when, when he, he talked to me, I said, to get Main Street closed, that's a state issue anyway. And it only goes through state.
We, we can close it, but it's a big deal.
It's a, it's a big.
Huge, it's huge. The activity.
I don't, I don't, again, don't have any problems and I totally value the concerns and the, and efforts. And I totally get it. He's like, it's, that's a, not an easy thing to do. I don't, I don't do what they do. So I'm like, cool. I don't care to ask and it's, if it takes, if it's something that you would be interested in, I can put it together. But it seems to be a lot easier to do at county park. And if that takes the burden off and allows individuals to let loose a little bit, have some fun and dance and, you know, lip sync to something and have some fun with some of the other agencies. I'm totally cool going to county park.
I think you'd probably have more freedom out there, more time freedom. Cause I know in videos and shoots like that.
Parking would be better.
Stuff always takes a lot longer than you'd think, you know.
Well, there was, again, somebody said, hey, why don't we shut down Main Street? Imagine coming back like this and seeing downtown.
That is a cool idea.
It's a great idea.
Great idea.
It's darn near impossible, but it's a pretty cool idea.
Well, you could do it at the park and see how it goes.
We can, we can angle with, I've never produced a movie and.
You don't know what it's going to look like anyway.
I have no clue. I, I tell you what, I got this. I borrowed this from a guy from work and I've never used one before. So as I'm trying to use it, it was like, oh, he's already recording everybody and doing these things. I'm like, I'm practicing with it. I don't know what to push a button and stop it, I think is what it does. I'm hoping. I've got about an hour worth of something on there. So condense it to three minutes.
So it kind of sounds like the council's not so interested in closing up Main Streets and that would be such a headache.
Let's make that an official no. Can we get somebody to say no on it so I can wipe that off the slate and get a little bit of sleep? Good, excellent.
You will call for a vote?
Just, it, it, it makes me feel better that you guys all agree that we're good.
We just want it to work for you and not backfire on you.
As long as, that was kind of like the, the, I knew that when I asked that, what the answer was going to be.
We talked about that earlier.
Yeah. I do need, if the approval is given to volunteers to be a part of it.
Now, doesn't that really fall more under the, the use of the employees and the apparatus really falls under, under the mayor of what he?
I'm not in favor of this. My chiefs aren't in favor of this. If you all want to do it, you're going to have to instruct us to do it. Period.
I think it kind of falls. I almost feel like we're stepping into your executive authority on closing a street up here. It's ours, but I almost feel like if we say yes or no, we're stepping into your exec. And I don't, am I right or wrong, Andrew? I kind of think I am. Because it's what you do with your, or allow your personnel to do or not to do.
You know, I think it's a really great idea and it's a novel idea. Just from a purely legal perspective, we have, we have our own regulations. We have internal policies in writing that you're not supposed to wear, you're not supposed to show up in your uniform to anything that isn't an official city function. There's exceptions, you know, I'm on the way home from the store, from work and I got to stop at the store. That's sort of a de minimis thing, but an officer actually putting on a uniform and going to event, the implication is you are on duty. You're expected to act as an officer and you're expected to be compensated as an officer. And you are expected to behave as an officer would. And beside from the legal argument, the implication to the public is if you are appearing in a video in your uniform, you are acting as an officer and that, that is a problem.
Can I add to that just for a minute? As someone who is an officer, I'm first and foremost a human being. And if anybody's known me and seen me, we, we cut up quite a bit. And, and yes, we know the perception of us as professionals and we are, every one of us is a professional. But there's, there's a part of it that is, how do you have fun? You know, when, when is a way to release some of that stress and the anger and the frustration of work? That is undoubtedly there for every single one of those agencies. Would they be allowed to go, we're not trying to embarrass anybody. There are some good ideas of like, some of the policemen being firemen for a second and the firemen being policemen for a second. Because we have a banter back and forth that is unstoppable. You guys get to sleep, you get to run, you get to go home at night or of course the donuts and the lounge chairs. I mean, there's always that banter going on. So it's, it's not, it's something that we get to poke, kind of poke fun with each other, but not be embarrassing. And we don't want to do anything that embarrasses the city or the county or anything of that nature. Just trying to have a little fun and show that we have the ability to do that. If we can do it today, tomorrow, the next day, every single day of the calendar year, we just get to show everybody that we can.
Andrew, how important is it, or maybe I should ask anybody this question. How important is it that the vehicles are included and the uniforms are included? I mean, what would be doable without those things?
Oh, you, you could if, uh, you wanted to show up like I am now, but unless you know me, you don't know that I work for the fire department. Or I wouldn't know that he works for the city police department or, you know, the helicopter kind of be a gimme. But other than that, you know, you wouldn't, uh.
You could put a big sign on, it says GPD and F GPD.
Yeah, I mean, we see those shirts out and about all over the place, you know.
T-shirt, t-shirt.
I don't know, I'm just trying to throw out an idea.
I love them.
I understand where the mayor and Andrew are coming from and we have to give that heavy consideration as well. I, I don't have the best answer right now.
If they had, if they had t-shirts that said that identified them as PD or fire department. And then if that makes it okay for them to use, is it, if that's one section of it, would they be allowed to use their apparatus in the background or is that a problem with it being?
I don't have a problem allowing the chiefs to make the decision. If they think it's good for morale and maybe public perception of the departments, leave it up to them. But I don't want to go to the point where we instruct them to do this because then it becomes an official city.
And we don't want anybody to be like, you're going to do this.
Right.
Absolutely nowhere on that plate does that.
Well, I'm okay with allowing, but not instructing.
That's basically the question that I have just from you all to give them. If you want to do it, you're allowed to. If you don't, just say no.
Well, we already said no to shutting down the street. We voted on that, right? So now we're talking about just doing it.
In the county park.
In the county park. And we're.
Well, I'll get with the chiefs and with Mr. Wink and then let you all know what the decision is.
All right. Don't worry.
I think it'd be a very interesting thing to pull it out right, the right way though.
Yeah, I do too.
It's, it's been, I'll say it's fun, but very, very stressful, very stressful.
It's hard to please everybody.
It's like herding cats.
Oh, it's like you drop a bag of marbles and you're trying to slowly put them back together to put them back in the bag. And that's, that's true what it is.
It's a creative world.
Do you have a, a timeframe of when you would get with them to kind of let me know so I can start doing some more planning? I'll do, I know that I can do stuff with recordings with the county.
Within the next day, next 24 to 48 hours.
That's perfect for me. I got to work tomorrow, so you've got my number. Just give me a shout and whatever you say goes. I, I respect you and I appreciate everybody even giving, if you have some ideas, feel free to send them. I've got time to do it, so. Any other questions or concerns?
Good luck.
I'm going to need it. Appreciate it. Anything else? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Great.
Uh, next on the public comment sign in sheet is Ms. Veroness Carpenter. She came to talk about Thriller. She had no idea that she learned so much.
She must have shut down Main Street.
Oh, no, no. That's hard to do, isn't it?
It's hard to do after you follow that.
Well, the thing about this, this is a year thing. She does every year.
Well, thank you all for letting me speak today. My name is Veroness Carpenter. I'm the assistant director with Parks and Recreation Dance and Gymnastics Studio. And we are requesting to shut down Main Street on October the 27th from six to nine o'clock with the rain date being October the 28th. It's a great community event. Our kids look forward to this every year. We collect for the Amen House and offer donations for them. And this is our way of serving you all, bringing back to our community. And it's teaching our kids the responsibility to serve their community.
Motion, Mayor. We're not going to make you go through that. We did it every year. We love it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Good luck.
This your first time here?
Yes.
She said, oh, I said, dude, they're a tough crowd, Andrew.
We could have made you sweat a little bit, couldn't we?
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Getting her bags and leaving.
We should have taken you first, shouldn't we? Okay, uh, that completes the list of, uh, public comments. If there's no one else to address the council, uh, just a couple of quick mayor's comments. Some things that, uh, that you might see or might get questions about. On the bypass up here, uh, across from the original McDonald's, they're, they, they started taking down some of the sound barrier panels. You may have seen that happen. Uh, the property owner made that request some five years ago and it was permitted to do some five years ago. I think it's a chiropractor that owns the property and, uh, they didn't want their visibility to, to not to block. And, and they also, it, it may infringe on their building footprint. So if you get questions about those sound barriers being removed, uh, that was approved with the five year old permit.
It's just the ones at his property, it's not all the way down.
That's right. It's only on his property front. Uh, the rest of it that helps the residents to stay quiet will stay out. Uh, wanted to give the council a quick update on the status of our build grant. It, it has been received in Washington. I know that Senator Thayer had an opportunity to, uh, sit with Secretary Chow in Washington. Also was joined by, uh, Secretary Chow's deputy chief of staff and the administrator who heads the build grant program nationally. So we can be certain that Georgetown's application is the full attention of, of, uh, everyone in the federal transportation cabinet. Uh, they did say that there were 26 applications received from Kentucky.
Oh, wow.
The likelihood is that three to four will be funded. And, uh, what little buzz that we've heard, little feedback we've gotten is that, uh, the council's decision to submit their grant with a 25% match, uh, has been very well received by the folks. So December the 18th, we'll keep our fingers crossed, but preliminarily, I think we've, I think we've done everything we can do on that one. Later in the meeting, uh, we're going to, in just a few minutes, we're going to ask you for a municipal order approving the engineering contract for the South Sewer Line. You'll recall that we, uh, we selected the firm through an RFQ process and tonight we bring contracts. But during my comments, I wanted to mention that, that I appeared at the fiscal court meeting last Friday to update the court on this, uh, on this project. And a couple of real important things have happened since we last met. Uh, we think we have met the threshold of, uh, the surveys to get the low to moderate income established. Uh, we, we got back, uh, a greater number, I think, than we actually required. And those are being verified now. But if, if we think we're, uh, if we think we're right, we will, we've met that low to moderate income status, which was one of the key things that we had to do. Uh, and we all owe a debt of gratitude to the Scott County Immigrant Initiative, uh, and the Health Department. Gene Thomas from the Health Department made it a personal thing to get these signatures. And he and the immigrant initiative folks spent night after night in the trailer park. And, uh, we're pretty sure we've gotten that done. Also wanted to let you know about a conversation that, that Chase and I had before the fiscal court. We have always talked about our community goal of maintaining the green belt even as we solve this environmental problem. And we've always known that those were competing interests. We wanted a sewer line out there to solve the problem, but we didn't want to open it up for rampant development and blow up our green belt. So we've looked at pipe size as being one of the things we could use to, to restrict further future growth. That may not be the best strategy. And the reason I say that is we're taking a fresh engineering look at the project with the contract we'll present to you in a few minutes to see if this project can possibly be a gravity fed project. Uh, we had assumed up until this point that a portion of this project would be pump stations and, uh, force mains. Chase and our new team of engineers think there's a possibility this could gravity flow. And let's face it, gravity works forever and it's free. So the, I say that to indicate that, uh, in a, a long gravity flow line that is almost level to start with, if you put in a small line, it affects the physics of the way the solid waste flows. It won't flow enough. So we may have to put in a larger diameter pipe to allow the right gravity flow. And that will be a worthwhile trade off if we can get rid of pump stations and force mains. So Andrew and I have been talking, uh, about if we cannot rely on line size to protect us from, from that development, what, uh, ordinance tools and what policy tools do we have available? And we think we've got a full array of those, uh, with the comprehensive plan, with tap on fees, with tap on restrictions. So I just wanted to, to make sure the council was up to the same speed as the fiscal court. We're reevaluating what this line will look like in terms of its size. But it's an engineering look. It's not a change in our public policy. And that's the kind of discussion Chase and I have had about this. So just wanted you all to be aware, that's kind of no pun intended, that's a very fluid process.
You're on fire tonight.
I think that's good news, quite honestly. And I understand where you're coming from. I think, I think we all have, we don't, we don't want to see that area anything other than as green as it can be. anything other than as green as it could possibly stay. But at the same time, there was something telling me that spending whatever, $6 million to run a sewer line out there as small as I guess what we were originally talking about, there was just something that just didn't quite seem right about that either. And it wasn't so much the, the physics or the engineering of it, but potentially there could be something that we don't even know about that happens in Lexington that we really don't even have any control over, that potentially could tie into our line and be a, be an income stream and a revenue source for the water company. Could be 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road. And again, we may have zero control of it, just like we did the stockyards. And this could be an opportunity to recoup, recoup some of the investment we're putting into it. I honestly feel better about it. I'm glad you're sharing this information with us.
I've gotten rather philosophical about it. And, and I think that I'm okay with this outcome. I think we can protect ourselves through ordinances and public policy. And our other approach, even though we were protecting the green belt, it did feel counterintuitive.
Yeah.
So we're still gonna get these engineering answers. But it tells me we've got a bigger conversation to have.
And like you said, I believe gravity's always a better situation than trying to force, force main and pump it. So that's good.
So.
That's really good.
Big evaluation going on right now. And, and we may change direction. We may bring that back to you. Let's see. Also wanted to, oh, Mark asked a question about a street being paved. And we were able to go see if it's on the list. But it was a perfect opportunity for me and Eddie to look at the list again. And we are going to have two different paving opportunities this year. So just a reminder to the council, if you've seen any streets, we're happy to hear about them. Go evaluate them. Mark, we actually got the x-ray data from the street you asked about. It was, it was on our previous list. Party in the Park, the 18th. Those seem to have worked pretty well.
I was gonna ask, you know, a lot of people, because I've been up here, you know, at the same time. And a lot of people are still coming here. Isn't there a sign in the parking lot that calls it Party on the Square? In the city parking lot? Yeah.
Is there?
There is. I saw it when I was at the farmer's market.
They've never changed the sign.
Oh, we don't want to get through it or something.
Yeah, we do.
That's Paul's every day.
Because I saw that and I was like, woo, wait a second, that's an old sign.
That's good catch.
I'll see.
Also wanted to let you know that Jared Holland, our County Solid Waste Coordinator, has been working on a tire amnesty day. Everybody wants to know when you can get rid of tires that you may have around. And in Scott County, it's gonna be September 27th, 28th, and 29th. State Highway Garage on Maddox Street.
Maddox Street?
September 27th, 28th, 29th, Highway Garage on Maddox Street. The intention is for this to be for individuals who may have tires in their garage or shed. It is not for commercial businesses that accumulate hundreds of tires and then take advantage of Tire Amnesty Day.
Oh, that's great. I needed to know that.
And the, the last comment I have for mayor's comments is, it is full of interesting information. This is palindrome week. And every day from 8:10:18 until 8:19:18, the date is exactly the same frontwards and backwards. So it's palindrome week. It's just something I thought I would share.
Thank goodness.
Only us nerds would appreciate that. Okay.
All righty then.
That's great.
Right over top.
8:10:18. And every day from now through 8:19:18 is a palindrome.
Yeah, uh-huh. That's cool. I like numbers.
That went over with the plug. Item seven under GMWSS. Chase, we have approval of a bid from Palmer Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. After the last meeting, Councilwoman Single Sames was nice enough to give me some advice that on routine Georgetown municipal items we're bringing for your consideration, we can bundle those items for one vote instead of me going through it, taking up your time on all of them. So I apologize that I was, I was not doing that correctly. That being said, I only have one item tonight, so. We have a construct. We have a construction recommendation for our Bluegrass RV Gravity Sewer Project. We had a developer that wanted to tie onto our sewer system. He was going to discharge to a pump station, our pump station number eight. That pump station does not have capacity for that development. So we were looking at eliminating that pump station. It has a lot of problems as well, one with a gravity sewer. Developer got on board with us, partnered with us, and is willing to share one-third of the cost of the project. We're, we're taking on two-thirds of the construction cost and getting a gravity sewer in there that will serve that property. As I spoke with Councilmember Lesby, we only received one bid for this project. Normally, I'd say let's rebid that, see if we can get it, get it down lower, get some competition to drive the price down. However, the construction bid with Conhurst was very close to our engineer's estimate. And we don't want to hold this developer up any further, so we're bringing this tonight for your consideration.
Okay. Is there?
I'll make a motion for approval and, and kind of echo what Chase just said about the one bid. I know we all have concerns about that. But this time of year, it's, with everything that's going on, it's, it's just very difficult to get bids. I did speak with a contractor, you and I spoke. And they thought that that was a very good price that you received. And it came in within engineering estimates as well, right?
Yes, sir.
So.
I believe within $2,000.
Yeah.
I think when, when we come within, within engineer's estimates and we come within industry standards, I think we can have some confidence in doing that. So motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions for Chase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And that really was just item one, because, because we do have a second contract.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And actually, that's, that's later on.
After the meeting, I'll get with you on how I can bundle my items.
It's all good?
Yeah. I tell you, as long as you didn't raise water rates, just bundle them.
Chase happened to be here at a, at a meeting where we did bundle a couple of things.
Yeah, he was here.
He also understands that the new guy rarely gets that privilege.
Yeah, he had to go through all the, all the suits.
That's fair. Let's see. Item eight on your agenda is from Branstadter and Carroll. Some more discussion of the cemetery wall presentation.
Mayor, council? I'm Charlie Schneider with Branstadter Carroll. We're here to continue our discussion on the cemetery wall. We took y'all's suggestions and comments and went back and re-looked at everything and came up with a couple more options to take a look at tonight.
If the remote works.
Miracle of modern technology.
Sure works.
Your remote. Now the batteries must be dead.
Take a collection by using batteries.
Would you?
Here. Put that down there. Help raise your battery weight.
Here we go.
It's a smart TV.
It's a smart TV. It'll do it.
Assuming this is the clicker?
No, you just have to point at her. I ordered the part to make that work, but you just kind of point.
She said like a.
Point to the window.
It's off again.
Why did it go off?
That one's not going on.
There you go.
There we go.
So we get one or the other?
Give her a little wink.
Okay.
We'll get it right eventually.
She's gone, she quit.
No. She's in the doorway.
Well, you can see our title sheet.
There you go.
There you go.
So when we get to the next slide, we'll start the conversation off. This is the, the option one. This is what we presented last time. It's, it's unchanged from what we, we had. The only thing we added in there is I added in a, a technical cross-section to help explain the, the elevation changes and the, and the, some of the issues we're dealing with there. So there's not a much, not a lot to say on this option. We'll go on to option two. This option would be the, the full replacement of the wall. So here, we're coming back and taking the wall out completely. We're not doing anything on the top side. We're not doing anything down by the sidewalk. We're just putting in a new retaining wall that would be faced with natural stone and have a, you know, 42-inch fence on top that would act as a guardrail as well because of the elevation change. The existing wall, really, to be brought up to code, would have to have some kind of fence. The drop is just too great right now to have that without the fence on top of it. Going on to the south side, it, well, this, okay, this goes back to option three then. The south side, we were just looking at a solid wall. Wouldn't, since there's no elevation change between the two, there'd be no requirement to have the fence. You could have it on top for decoration, but it wouldn't be a requirement to have it. Option three, something that goes back and is very similar to what the option one was, but we're bringing in that half-wall that everyone seemed to like from the, from the photographs to really help dress up what's on top. And as you can see from the cross-section, really, it's the same work as being done on the first option. We've just brought in those elements to help make it a nicer wall. Again, this would be dressed with, with natural stone on all the, the columns and on the short wall. The main difference on this one is that it would require a foundation on top of the hill, whereas in option one, a foundation wasn't required. So this is a little bit more excavation going on closer to the cemetery. I still think we're probably far enough away, but it just gets that excavation a little bit closer.
What's the difference between the height of the stone wall there now and what you've got right there? How many inches from, say, the ground up of stone do we have that option?
So this wall in option three is two feet tall, is the way we have it drawn, yes.
Do you know what we have right now?
It varies in height, but I believe it's about four foot tall.
It's about four.
And option two, that wall varies in height as well, probably from about four foot tall to a maximum height of about six and a half to seven feet tall. The other main difference in both these two options, the second two, is that they require some stepping of the wall as you get further north. Just because of the grade change on the road, it starts to, everything starts to deviate a lot faster. And it requires a little bit of stepping. That's not a, an issue, but just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. It wouldn't be the solid straight piece. It would have some elevation change.
Did, did option two include the stepping?
It would include it, yes.
So option two and three?
Yes. There may be ways to do it without, but I think from an aesthetic standpoint and talking to our landscape architects, that's the best way to go about it. Trying to do it any other way is just kind of, it would compromise the site.
Charlie, you, you show in, in option three, you're showing this fence-wall combo at the top of the hill.
Correct.
So, but theoretically, option, either option two or three could be done in the place of the existing fence, right?
This one could not be done where the existing wall is.
Okay.
Because it's, it's not tall enough to be a retaining wall. If we're gonna keep it where the existing wall is, it has to be a taller and more substantial wall to hold back that, that hillside.
Is there an option four or five?
No, just three options that we've come up with.
Can you scroll back to two then?
Yeah, or we go to the next slide. Actually, we can see all three at the same time. It might be a little bit easier to talk about the differences between them.
Okay, so two has no columns, right?
And, and again, you're talking option four, option five, yes. If you wanted to put columns intermittently along that and bring that in, you could.
Maybe at the step downs?
Even with the step downs, yes.
I mean, at the step downs? You know, make them a little bit more spaced out than what option three has?
I think the step downs that he's talking about are envision a fence that comes along and has to come up. It would count for grades.
Yeah, like brick walls.
Correct.
But that's, that's not really an aesthetic thing as much as it is a requirement of the grade.
Of the grade.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
The only reason it's not required in option one is those steps would be naturally built in. I mean, it would require the same steps, but.
The fence can adjust to the grade. Any fence can adjust to a grade a lot easier than a solid wall that wants to have that horizontal look to it. You just don't want to really take a, a wall and start angling it. Not this style wall, anyway. She can with certain retaining walls, but this would be, it would look to be right.
So on option two, that's the north side, that's the south side of, of the gate, going south.
No, all three of these would be on the north side.
All three of these are on the north side.
Yeah, that's the hardest condition to take care of. On the south side.
It's not a big deal.
It, it's, it's really easy. And, and any of those looks can be replicated on the south side. It's just very much, very straightforward.
Option two, that's how, how tall of the, the masonry work is how tall?
At its highest point, it would be about six or seven feet tall. And if you look back at the section, what we've done there is we've really taken advantage of having to build that big wall and raise it up maybe a foot or two higher, but it creates a, a nice flat spot at a six-to-one slope behind the wall that's much easier to maintain.
So why do you need the black rod iron on top of it?
To keep people from falling onto the, because it's such a six-foot. When you get above 30, 36 inches anyways, 32 to 36 inches, a guard rail is retired, required at the top of the wall. And that's, we have this fence just at 42 inches on top of that to serve that purpose instead of a full six-foot.
Will it do? There is a fence here in town that they've put up. And I guess if it's not there, you'd fall into the, fall into 25, the 460 up here. But their rod iron fence they have on top, when you go by it, it goes in, it goes out, it goes in, it goes out. It's, it's given, it sways, it's not, it's no longer straight. The masonry part's fine, but the top of it is no longer. I know where you're talking. Yeah, I know. It does, it bows, yeah.
That was really poorly installed.
But it was a poorly installed. I did it. I think they did it themselves. The proper owners did it themselves, so.
Yeah, with the, with the concrete retaining wall and this.
Not moving.
Yeah, it, it, it's gonna be built into the wall. It's not behind it, it's part of the wall.
You're probably down, your rod iron's probably down in there a foot or so in that wall at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And two and three is on a foundation, right?
Both two and three are on foundations, yes. So it's much deeper excavations to get those built. But there, you know, we, we were talking before about something that's gonna last, you know, 50, 100 years. Option two and option three are things we're looking at. It's going to be there for a very long time. Once you put something below the frost depth and build it with that, it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be there. Option one is going back to putting a decorative fence in place.
Well, the magic number is what does one cost, what does two cost, and what does three cost?
So, yeah, the costs are.
You have three very different price tags.
I can imagine.
And they probably, one's cheaper, two's more, and three's a lot.
300, 800, and 900.
Yeah.
Same difference.
Option one?
Is this, is this?
Die.
Three, four, to seven?
Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Nine, eight.
The wind. It's a little bit breezy. That would get my vote.
The watch, the rock.
Real stone, right? Capt, is real stone as well?
That's what we're looking at. Of course, we've not selected the stone type. And there's variances in the stone type. But we're not looking at doing a cultured or a lick and stick stone. It is a veneer. They're not stone walls. You know, so it would still be an application over a cast-in-place concrete wall. But it would have that real stone look.
Would it be a dry stack look?
We could do a dry stack with that, yes.
What would you recommend?
Well, on a veneer, it really doesn't matter. I mean, because it's not adding anything to the wall as far as the structural component of it. And, you know, we could, the dry stack always has more problems with getting moisture and everything else in it. It may, over the long term, have the ability to pop the stones out. The techniques are pretty good to make it, to make it last.
Is there any chance on all three options again? Can you give the height, the, the com-
the complete height from the base all the way to the very top, top portion on each?
Sure, just the fence component itself, not taking the grade into... So the, the first option was a six-foot tall fence. Option number two, the retaining wall varies from four feet to about six and a half to seven feet. And it has a four-foot fence on top of it. Then option number three, it's a two-foot wall, again, with a four-foot fence on top of it, given the same height as option one, it's about six feet.
Wow.
And again, clarity, options one and three on the north side would be installed at the top of the hill.
Correct.
And then when they go to the south side, they could be installed in the same footprint. But option two would be installed in the same footprint all the way through.
The entire lake.
What we're looking to say.
Like option two, it looks the most like what we currently have.
It looks good, too.
Except with the fence fencing on top of, which I don't really like the fencing on top of it. And, but it looks the most like replacing similar to what we, what we currently have.
Yes.
Which is on option two. And if it can stay at the sidewalk down, I think most, generally, most people would like that better as well.
You budgeted what, huh?
You're a shill.
Two hundred, well, we can amend the budget.
May I, pardon, can you, would you have a question for the audience?
Yeah, first, let me see if there's any more council questions. Right ahead.
I've got one, Steve, whatever you want to... Whatever option, if we move forward on whatever option we choose, what's the timeframe we're looking at for, from start to finish? What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
Well, option one would obviously be the quickest. I, I really can't this time of year say in option two or three, digging in the foundations, having to do that work if, you know, if it extended out. But I, I wouldn't, I would not think that it would take longer than, you know, six to eight months on the outside for any of those options. Option one may be, you know, it would be the short three to six months.
And we, we bid this project out, obviously. Hope we get more than one bid.
Tom's hoping to bid a lot of them.
I'm hoping to get a lot of them. Yes, sir, Steve, do you have a question?
Steve? Yes, sir. Are you aware of the large old white oak tree that's almost in the line of the wall on, on the south end?
Yes, there, there are a number of trees that we're gonna have to, to go out there and, and design around or, or see what we can do with the tree itself to make sure that they're taken care of. I mean, there's ways to address that in design. We just need to know which, which direction we're going first before we tackle those individual problems.
I'm sorry?
We need to know which direction, if we're gonna put the wall where it is now or if it's on top of the hill, you know, how that, we, we have to know that before we know how it's gonna impact the tree.
I think Steve's question, probably, you're not cutting the tree down here.
No, I mean, we would not want to do that unless it was what, you know...
So, so the, the plan is to retain the tree?
If possible. I mean, it might be a, a case where we cannot. I, I'm not exactly sure, but it, it has impact on where the wall is. You know, if we could take the wall around, up in front of it, we have the right-of-way towards the street to do it. That might be one option.
There is a right-of-way there.
There is a little bit, yeah, there is a little bit. So, you know, there is possibilities of saving it. That becomes just a design challenge more than...
So, so these, these options, excuse me, maybe I'm slow to understand, but the, the options, the, 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 the actual position of the wall varies with the option.
Correct. If we can go back to the, um, the first two slides, I think you can see better where those... Yeah, she's trying. Especially the first slide you do, or option one, that would be the...
Laurie, you have the back?
Yeah.
There you go.
Might be kind of hard to see, but the sidewalk, curb and gutter are down at the lowest elevation for the street. Then we're proposing to put in a short knee wall that's about eighteen inches tall to help make up some of the grade. From there, it was gonna be a, a straight three-to-one slope to the top of the hill where we replace the fence. So this is the same for option one and option three. You can see there in the middle, I drew where the existing wall is today. So option one and option three, we're talking about putting it at the top of the hill. And this is for the north of the gate only. South of the gate would remain in the same location. Now, if you go to, um, option two, that wall now is in the same exact location of the existing wall. But you can still see where the slope ends at the top. That's where the fence would have been located in, in the other two options. So really, it's, it's about ten foot, I think, closer to the road?
Yes.
Option two is, and option one and three. We, if you can go to slide after the three options, we can see some existing pictures. Slide six. Maybe that top right one, or this one here. So this is the top of the hill right here where you can see the tree. That's the proposed location of where the fence would go. And option one and three, whereas you can see where the existing wall is today. So option two would be in the location of the existing wall.
I like option two.
I like two.
I know it's gonna cost, I know it's gonna cost twice as much money as option one, but I had people come in and shop after our last conversation about the fence. And the question I asked them, I said, because they didn't like what was presented to us. They were glad we said something. And so I asked them, I said, now, you know, if you do this other fence, it's gonna cost a whole lot more money. Are you wanting us to spend that extra money on it? So then their next question was, is it really gonna last a hundred years? I said, that's what we've been told.
I was asked a question sort of similar, make it right. Make it look the best we can afford to make it look. That's all there was concern, make it look good.
Especially because it's a gateway into the city and also, I mean, a cemetery and people's families are there.
That's right.
Yeah, of course, uh, nine hundred and change is more than double three forty. It's more like triple.
Well, I told the people that I was talking to, I said it's going to be a million dollars. I went too far off. So I was close to what I was telling them.
And it's ten times more than what we initially started talking about.
We currently have budgeted two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Well...
Well, as you know, we're not fence builders.
That's true.
That's for the next five years, fair.
And we discussed this for how long? How long we've been talking about this fence?
Well, whenever it fell down.
A year, no, it's been over a year.
I've been asked, you're gonna put the fence back?
Option two.
Yes.
On the north side, would there be any concern at all about erosion on that slope?
Or on the left side?
On the outside, where what's happened now where it settles or pushes out, pushes the wall out?
Right, so one of the reasons I've, I made it taller than the existing wall is, is to help alleviate issue with that slope coming down on the wall. So it would be a much flatter. Right now, it's basically a three-to-one slope. I'm thinking it's a six-to-one slope. And to give a little bit of an idea, state parks won't allow you to mow anything steeper than four-to-one. So that, a six-to-one slope is a fairly gentle slope.
So there's, you don't have any concern about what's happened there now where that's pushed the wall out? I mean, I grant, I know a lot of that's probably age. Is there no concern at all about that?
No, no, not, not a retaining wall that's, that's properly built and, and constructed and designed. It's gonna stay.
Well, you, you have some kind of drain li, hole or something in that wall for that water coming off that bank. You have to have something for, because it's gonna collect that water in there, right?
Right, yeah, so there's...
You have some kind of drainage.
Foundation drains in the back of the wall to collect it and bring it down, right?
That would really look good with the house.
That looks good, I like to.
Option two with the existing house.
Tom, we like to, you're gonna have to start digging. Literally dig.
Get your shovel.
For money.
Out there.
Not up there.
My mom always said, always just go out in the backyard and get it off the money tree.
That's right. Walnut tree.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can our, can our public works maybe do the demolition, the twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars in removing the wall?
Most likely, I think that'll become a timing issue because once you demo the wall, of course, then you're exposing the soils and you, we'd have to be ready to come in right behind them and, and deal with, uh, with the construction with their, you know... You have to do your stormwater protection plan and get everything. It'd have to be ready to go.
So you guys would probably do a certain percentage at a time and, and put, start that wall and take another section out, go for that second, that how you would do it?
I would leave that up to the contractors for their staging.
I mean, I, I just think that's worth exploring, especially if it's in a time of the year where, you know, we have some resources available.
You're asking, you're asking, can they do it, period? And he's interpreting you saying, can we do it now, right?
Well, time is...
Time is...
I would do it now.
I think we had intended for our public works to do it.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, it was in the budget here, twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, but there's a little...
Frankly, your public works director is not intending to do it.
No, no.
And the cemetery director is not intending for public works to do it. But, but we'll be glad to talk to him about it if that's a possible.
That's a thirty thousand dollar question.
Is, uh, is any of the blocks up there that we're getting ready to take away salvageable?
Some of it may be, some of it's probably more rotten than others, I mean, because it does decay over time. But you, we definitely want to salvage anything we could because the existing gate has some of that, those blocks in it, so it could be incorporated. I don't think it'd be able to be used extensively on a new wall.
No, why was the thing about that?
Because we're keeping our gates the way it is.
Saving it.
Correct.
Charlie, we, council had expressed an interest, given the historical nature of the front wall, that if we could salvage enough of those blocks to build a different type of structure, even a memory garden or a, a, a place for carremains or some special feature inside of the cemetery and utilize those old materials, we'd feel better about it. That's, that's a concern there.
Please.
But are we talking about the main entrance, Mayor? Because those are real stone in the main entrance.
We're keeping the, the gates and the main entrance are not a part of this project.
Right, okay, that's what I understood as well.
Everything else should, the fences.
There's, there's a portion of the main entrance, I think those two end towers that were built out of the, the wall material here. And we weren't intending to go in and take those towers out either.
Are they cast? Are they poured concrete?
No, it's, I think it's a dry cast. I'd have to go back and look at the masonry on it, but it, it was very similar to what was on the other portions of the wall.
Because that, yeah, that's not authentic stone.
No.
Okay. And I did notice in here, it does say pre-cast stone cap. So does that mean it's gonna be a concrete poured cap?
So the, the piece that's between the wall and the, um, and the fence, it's just, it's a, that is a pre-cast stone cap. That's just generally the way we, we, we top, we, we top the retaining walls, the nicer retaining walls.
Yeah. I mean, that, that, I think that's, I don't know, at least to me, I think we need to pay attention to the quality, what that looks like.
Yes. Now, those, they're, they're very nice looking stone caps. It almost looks like a sandstone piece. It, it's not something that's inexpensive at all. We use them all the times on, on courthouses and, and other big construction projects.
Okay. So can I ask you one more question, or at least, at least one more? You know, on some of the, the stone fences that you see along some of the horse farms in Lexington, they kind of have a little arch at the bottom, and I, I guess that's for whatever, animals, foxes, to crawl under. Is that what they're for?
Uh, it could be, it could be for drainage, I, I guess it would depend on the locations.
Would something like that every so often add to the character of that wall? Or would it not be even worth mentioning?
We could do it south possibly, but we couldn't do it on the north side with retaining wall.
Yeah.
Aesthetically, though, it, yeah, can't do it on both sides. Probably shouldn't do it.
Both sides need to be same as possible, if it's possible.
Topsoil you like, David?
Two.
Look for motion.
We're pretty much in, the council's pretty much in unison on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably have to have a motion to do this, though, won't we, Tom? On which, which one we like.
Yeah, I, and I was just gonna ask, Charlie, I... If council settles on one particular option, then, then you go to drawing bits back.
We would first refine the design to, you know, make sure we come up with, with any of those issues, like saving the tree and, and what would have to be done. So we would have that next step of, you know, design development to really nail down the entire wall before we went full into this construction documents, design specs.
We're not under contract for that yet.
In the little green space between the sidewalk and the wall, I assume that would be refilled with good topsoil?
Yes, yeah.
Flowers or whatever, maybe even put enough lights in there to shine on the wall at night?
That could be done, yeah.
Now we've gone to the million dollars that I said.
Then you gotta pay that electric bill.
I might add, salvaging the blocks does add to the demolition cost, too, because there's a lot more handling the contractor has to go through and sorting and storing and taking care of the walls. So there's costs associated with that.
Just taking things in sequence, is, is there a consensus on which design the council is...
I think this side here's got number two.
We all like two.
Chuck?
I like two, I just don't like the price on it.
But we don't, no, we didn't, we didn't say we liked the price.
Yeah, we all love the price.
Mark? Two.
Only thing I ask, if we're gonna build a million-dollar wall, I want it to look like a million-dollar wall.
Yes. Agreement to that.
That's why I'm asking a few questions.
Well, from the looks of that picture, if it looks anything like that picture, it looks good.
Oh, that's going right.
Brush hot sheet?
No.
Always ask when you bid it out for further exhibits from the manufacturer themselves. We really wanted to know exactly what that wall was gonna look like. I'm sure they would be able to provide that.
They have all kinds of stone selection, color selection, all, whole process, yes.
Counsel?
We, we need to get our steps in order.
Yeah.
We, all, all of us want the most beautiful wall there we can have and we, we wanna be proud of the fact it's been there for, for a very long time. I do want us to keep firmly in mind all of the many needs we have. For one, when we started talking about replacing a cemetery wall, I had no idea we were talking about a billion dollars. I don't think anybody on this council did. In fact, we, we were talking about maybe an actual three hundred vessels of it. So I, I love the design. I'm just, I've got stickers on it. And, and it's my job to find the money in a budget. I gotta ask this question, do we have to have the wall? I'm thinking that we always talk, see out through the cemetery, tell them that we have to be more... Reason for the eye and the concrete wall.
That opens that cemetery wide open, like people often, when you really want...
It's open already, Mark. They got a way behind my building goes through there all the time.
There has to be something with the sidewalk to address the grade without like short wall, eighteen-inch, twenty-four-inch wall of the sidewalks, because the grade would be too steep to just remove it.
On the north side.
On the north side, correct.
Just asking a question, in option one, is that a whole new sidewalk and knee wall?
Uh, I believe we were just looking at replacing the knee wall. We're just adding, not replacing, adding the knee wall. We were not replacing the, the sidewalk.
Mayor, would you feel more comfortable if we put this on to our next council meeting? Or at least, at least one more council meeting, to have them to think about it?
Well, I, I, I know the public wants to see this appearance and, and we really can't make a decision until we bid the project. I don't think you're gonna be off five million dollars.
Before we, you know, test, or we take the other test, just ask for that freedom.
Well, or, or support, or, you know.
Support is a better word.
I think, I think...
It is a cemetery. It is a cemetery. I mean, I think.
It is, it is. And a local agreement with them, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just.
I would like to, I think I need to have that conversation now that we have a little harder instruments. But, but I do think that we'd have to move forward with the design as it's regarded.
Right. There's just no way you could put option one there, no good book, that, you know?
My point was, we, we actually are going to need to negotiate the cost for Brain Center to do an actual design that if we did, and we may have to come back and be all to approve that first, in any way.
That's likely the case. If you remember, Brain Center here started off this exercise with us as a very small contract to help us with a few technical details on the wall. And then our expectations changed, and they responded to those. They have now done about five times more work than their contract called for. So it is time to read it, to, to negotiate it out and move forward here. Why don't I bring that back to the council?
That, and, and that gives you an opportunity to get up to process.
Fair enough, Charlie.
Sounds great.
I guess everyone on this council would, too.
Yeah, we all, we all said yes.
So you got, you got a good idea of which one we're looking at.
Charlie, that's why you and Andrew have worked on what that contract looks like. As we get it ready to come back with the council, then I'll get us some questions about if we have a funding one.
Mayor, can I, I want to mention one more thing. This, this is kind of an interesting, we don't get many opportunities for projects like this. You know, we, we, we spend a heck of a lot of money on sewer lines underground and roads that, that people utilize. I'm sure they appreciate, but they don't always realize the beauty in roads. This is a fifty to hundred year project, and it, I think this is just, this kind of has a neat factor to it. From my perspective, I think it kind of becomes a landmark. I think it's a huge improvement to the cemetery, to that specific area. I'm, I'm sure we all think that.
Absolutely.
So it's just a little different, I think, to me.
Well, it makes you proud that you might, should be able to do this for the community as well, because they heard one of this thing.
It's a landmark.
Yeah.
It's a landmark.
It's a landmark.
And, and we done, we said earlier, if we wanted to look the best we can make it look, we put it up.
I have to say thank you, Mayor.
I do, too, Tom.
Just call smug?
Yes, it does.
Charlie, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Ah, let's see here. Chase, believe it or not, it took a long time to get through it. They were probably one mile out of two, three, four.
He loves being here.
Heard that.
Great, Chase, always. We, we, as, as you know, we've been, Chase has kind of gotten an indoctrination by fire into a lot of the projects that we have going on, but he has picked up this, uh, south sewer line project and, and really run with it. At the last meeting, you approved the, the firm that we chose, RFQ, and you now have a contract for that.
Sir, we have, uh, with Hazen and Sawyer, a contract for preliminary design, which will include as the, the focus of this, uh, part of this first contract will be alternatives analysis. We've already put together, John, four or five different things that we think will work, and we just need to drill down and investigate which one of those options is the best for solving the problem and then long-term operation for George T. Hammons. So this is just a preliminary design contract that, um, we've looked, that we've received a fee for. It's ninety-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars. Um, one of our funding sources, uh, we were told last week that we need to spin that down immediately. Uh, it's one million seventy-five dollars that they said could be taken at any point. So we actually pulled a few things from what would normally be done in final design to preliminary design, including, um, a little over nineteen thousand dollars in, uh, environmental assessment. And so that's part of that, that we, we normally, without that, right now, we'd be at about a seventy-five thousand dollar preliminary design.
And that's actually the Kentucky infrastructure of our, the urging us to get some of this million seventy-five thousand dollars spent and actually encouraging us to frontload this first contract.
We, we looked at some other items, but it, it just gets a little just difficult to, to pull final design stuff in and be able to.
Mayor, I make a motion for Hazen, Sawyer, preliminary, I guess, engineering services?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Question's been made and seconded. Any questions for Chase or one of the principals of the company here as well? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Contract's for you.
Thank you, please. Uh, let's see, item C on your agenda, we have a municipal order approving net gain contracts.
Yeah, we're going to be buying, um, some new firewalls and relocations to replace, um, some existing firewalls that have gone out of warranty and are really not adequate for their purposes. And then we are going to be implementing a, a critical backup solution that is, uh, much less susceptible to hackers and to fire control concerns. It's an off, it's an off-network backup solution. Another thing it will do is currently, the way we back up our data is overnight, every night, the system goes in and basically takes a snapshot of what's there and then stores it. This will actually go and uses a, a new technology that is a high compression, and it actually takes multiple pictures every single day, all day, and stores it. So instead of losing a full day's work, if we got hacked, you may only lose two hours' worth of work. And it's also because of the way it, it images the data, it's recoverable much quicker. So it's, it's, you know, a pricey solution, but it's in line with modern practices, and it's, it's net gain recommendation to implement that technology.
And we have a small question.
And we do.
Contracts? Sounds good.
Second.
Thank you. There are no questions about the two net gain contracts? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is one we've been waiting for all night long.
Sir, this is the wow factor.
That's your words.
Exactly.
Real quickly.
Mr. Beagle not joining you at the podium tonight?
He will in just a second, yes, sir. Went to fiscal court last Friday, while we're asking for is, uh, Country Boy Brewing is going before KITA, Kentucky Economic Development and Finance Authority, in this month, thirtieth of this month, for their final approval for their incentive. And it's by law, we're required to come to council as well as bring the owner to council to talk about the project. So prior to reading, reading the, uh, the ordinance or municipal resolution, Mr. Jeff Beagle, co-founder and co-owner of Country Boy, is here to just give you a quick description of the project as it comes to fruition.
Thank y'all for having me here tonight. I know a couple of you, not a whole, I know you a lot better now, since I've sat here for.
Well, we hope that's better.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little bit about the project. Uh, it was out there, Lane Runs Industrial Park. Uh, it's approximately a five point eight million dollar project. Uh, we currently, uh, last year, were full production, uh, in June of last year, uh, produced about thirteen thousand, three hundred barrels of beer. Uh, this year, we're on track to do about eighteen thousand barrels of beer. Uh, eighty-five percent of that production still stays in the state of Kentucky, even though we distribute to Indianapolis, uh, Roanoke, Virginia, Hall of West Virginia, Nashville, Knoxville, and Johnson City, Tennessee. So, uh, it's, uh, we're on track to be one of the largest breweries in the state of Kentucky here within the next year and a half.
Wow, that's awesome.
Congratulations.
And we've, if, you, you may know, we're in the process of purchasing the next four acres. Also have plans in place for a one point six, one point seven million dollar expansion to the existing building. Um, who knew? We needed storage space for cans, you know? I don't know why we didn't figure that one out a long time ago.
Twisted, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's, that's where we stand right now. Any questions?
No.
Not at all. You know, council will recall that this, uh, process is multi-step. It begins with council passing a resolution, and then it may be several years before they actually activate the incentive.
I think it's two, two years?
After KITA approves it by the part of the month, then they have two years to activate it. In fact, the first development of the process, the preliminary development application was done in July of two thousand fifteen. So you're right, the process is lengthy. But after this is done, they'll be in position to activate within two years.
So the new land that they purchased?
They're purchasing. They, they received, I've referred to council contract, they have the first right of refusal for four, four acres. It turns out to buy the plant, which we're finally getting done, is about four and a half acres. But what Jeff's talking about on the preliminary development plan that was approved, that we did show that an, an expansion off of the southwest side. So that's what he's talking about.
That's the one point six million dollar expansion?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll, it'll double our square footage with that location. You've been there, they're canning, with the canning area distribution area, it's tight.
But that's on their existing property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the five million? I apologize. Was there a five million dollar project as well?
The five point eight million was the, the construction of the twenty-two thousand square foot building as it is now, with equipment and structure.
Got you. What's there now?
Yes. And that's what you're, that's what you're voting on today.
Okay.
If they need another KPI on the second project?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Okay.
And then when we get to, and we still want to close the four and a half acre deal. So this person taxes on the employee's barrier at twenty-nine right now, and we'll be at thirty-one, uh, mid-September.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
No, second.
Thank you. Does any, that need to be written in the form of a, a, an MO? Good. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I appreciate you sticking around for the civics lesson tonight.
Tracy, I'd like you to reflect that I didn't vote, because I'm accusing myself of, of not voting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you got stock in here?
Uh, let's see, under Public Works, we have a municipal order approving a bid for Herbies. Hey, Robert, you're here.
He's very quiet in the corner.
He's very quiet in the corner.
Sleep?
No. We, we need more Herbie's, so. We put out for bid this time. We didn't go by state contract. Got a little better price, about a dollar, quarter less than what we paid last time.
That's good.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, that we buy five hundred Herbies. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank y'all.
Now you can go home, Robert.
The kid.
Item ten on your agenda, two items, a municipal order accepting the streets of Pleasant Valley. I think this is real straightforward, Eddie. It's, uh, they've been inspected, we're, we're prepared to accept them into our road network.
Yeah, it's a, it's an old, older subdivision that's finally been finished up and ready to be brought into the city assets.
Sounds good. And you have that memorandum in your pocket?
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, Ms. Early. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious, thank you. Uh, next item Eddie has, he knows it's my favorite thing, and he knows it's the council's favorite thing, change orders. So Eddie, Eddie kind of comes in around quitting time and throws his hat into the office before he comes in to talk about change order. But this is a, a, a change order that affects our Lemons Mill project that we've been working on for some time. And Eddie, this is a, reinforcing a ditch line?
Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna line it with, uh, channel lining. Um, we noticed a lot of erosion when we were doing our final punch list, and thought long-term it'd be better if we lined the ditch to make it more stable. And that's what the, the change orders were.
And I think that was the cabinet's recommendation as well.
City, I mean, the state and the, the design engineers.
Okay. Uh, and that change order is in the amount of?
Fifteen thousand. Three hundred ninety-seven dollars, this is it. Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, also want you to know on that particular project that, uh, we're now going to be, uh, able to go ahead and put the final coat of paving down?
Yes, good.
And stripe it, and our part of this project will be complete. Uh, the state is going to, uh, initiate, uh, design and bidding of, uh, rebuilding the intersection, the four posts that are required for us to be able to do everything we want to do, but the state's going to do that at their expense.
Yes.
Good.
Awesome.
Uh, we do think that, uh, I first thought the state would be able to do that much more quickly. Uh, we'll probably start paving as quickly as next week. Uh, we can turn our paving contractor loose next week. Uh, the state indicated that for them to get the, uh, the engineering work done and bid the project, that it may be around five months, Jack, before they actually recon, get the intersection reconstructed, that our responsibility will be over.
Yes, and we'll, we'll relate that to the manufacturing. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Eddie. Uh, item five on your agenda, under the fire department, we have a municipal order approving a contract renewal for physicals.
Yes, this county, mayor, council is part of our yearly, uh, requirements, do physicals on our, uh, members.
And this is a, an extension of a contract that you have been lined, is that right?
Yeah, Dr. Wong.
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
And Chief, you've also got some items for surplus?
Yes, two riding mowers. We had in this, uh, current year's budget, a replacement of those mowers. We did bid those out through the gov, quote, system, and part of that bid was we, uh, offered to the two current mowers we got to get, them give us a price for trade-in in order to apply for that purchase of the other mowers. So we need to surplus these in order to do that.
You need to sell it to buy you another, what you're saying?
Well, it'd help.
So they're going to do some trade-in credit?
Those two riding mowers that we currently have?
Yeah.
They're going to take those in on trade-in.
Right, okay. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Uh, I need to get with our jailer. I may have promised our jailer one of those.
Okay.
He got enough money, he can.
He can buy one.
There you go.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, and that completes all the items on the agenda. Uh, we'll start with council comment. David?
No, sir.
Marvin?
Um, I had a question given to me the other day, and I don't have an answer. It's going up, um, turn right there, going up, what is that, uh, where I live, there's a street, where you get your, Highland?
Yeah.
There's trees out in the middle, from the sidewalk to the road, you got the green. Well, there's trees up, down through there. And I've had the people complain that it's starting to grow out into the road. You know what I'm talking about, don't you, Mayor?
Sure do.
And I thought that was city's property from the sidewalk out to the road, the grass in between is really city property. The residents just maintained that. Am I correct or wrong?
I think it's right of way.
It's right of way. Uh, there is a little bit confusing whether our ordinance is allowed trees in the right of way or not. What, what is not allowed is it can't grow into the sidewalk or out into the road to a certain height.
Some of those trees are this big around already.
Where are we? Where are we?
Right at the corner of Broadway and Highland.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the, all of that frontage?
Right.
Has been, has been.
The gentleman's from Italy or somewhere, and I haven't spoken to him. I just got a comment from a couple people wanting to ask questions, so I've asked questions.
I was wondering, too, did that wall?
We'll have code enforcement address. In fact, at this point, it's not a violation, but it will surely become one.
It has to grow into a wall.
Yeah, and we've got an ordinance to address it.
Unless, unless, of course, he trims it regularly. If you, you trimmed it into a wall, I mean, it would irrationally not violate our ordinance.
I asked a question this year.
You did.
Thank you. Anything else, Mom?
No, sir.
Yeah, I was walking at Royal Spring Park a couple weeks ago, so it might already been fixed. But some of the stones on the stone wall, uh, some of the big stones fell out, and I just thought, you know, people might trip over them or get wet.
Water.
Yeah, all that retaining wall, kind of.
Is that Royal Spring Park?
Kind of near the.
Retaining wall.
Yeah.
Back from the screen.
Yeah, kind of near the.
Near the deck. Near the deck.
Near the deck and all that, but just something I thought.
We're, uh.
And it's going to happen, the rain will get that too, they just.
Seeing those pictures, probably, it makes me think that we're, we're working on a, we're working on a Community Service Day with employees from Toyota that are going to celebrate National Land Study, and we're, we're looking at, at an employee group from Toyota that's going to help us clean up UCO Inn.
Oh, okay.
And we've been meeting on site with them to talk about what will be done and what staging that we have to do ahead of time for them to have a really productive experience. One of the things we're going to do, we're, we're trying to get done, is we're looking at pumping out the pond at UCO Inn to get it low enough to where we can bring in some soft tired equipment and a boom, and vandals or just folks thinking they were having fun have been ripping off the capstones of the rock wall around the pond and pellin' the stones in the pond. So the stones are what are tearing the liner and causing the problems. Some of the capstones are bigger than two men can wrestle with, so we think we can lower the water level enough to use equipment to lift the stones out. We're going to clean the stones, drown them off.
Yeah.
And let them be sitting there for about a week before our volunteers come, and then they're actually going to use some real high-strength adhesive to try and seal those rocks down.
Yeah, you got to have them, yeah, because the stress stones.
Also, plans to, to do some multi-areas and some tulip bulb areas that will keep people just a step or two back from the edge of the pond. Actually, going to try and harvest some of the Irish bulbs that are in there now and replant them. So, we're, we're seeing, we're getting some big opportunities like that, but we're going to have to work a month of staging to get ready for them to come do it.
Especially with the rain and just all the other events we have coming on, the festival of horse and all that.
And while you're on Royal Spring Park, something that Eddie's been working on for months is, we know that the, the little stream, the quarter right there, Royal Spring Park, is not supposed to be filled with silt.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be a flowing stream, and today it is so clogged by silt.
It is, yeah, yes.
That, you know, weeds are there, and it needs to be dredged, exonerated. Eddie's been working on getting some core samples of what that muck is, so that we can get with the contractor and determine what we can do to go ahead and clean out all that stuff, that stream flow, and it'll be one of our starts on Royal Spring.
Especially if we have the fence on down there and get a walk. Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask Eddie and Connie about the traffic committee, and Eddie had said, and so did Harlan Wilson, said that he had spoken with him about trying to get Hill Street one way.
We, that was what he was going to do, but we've not had our meeting this month to get feedback yet, so if Eddie wants to address it, he can.
Well, I was going to address it with Eddie.
Yeah.
When will that be?
The third Monday of this month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I want to give the Public Works a shout-out, a neighbor had, had a lot of brush cut back and piled it in the appropriate place, appropriate size, and I called this morning at seven forty-five, and I got all eight, four o'clock, it was, the grabber truck picked it up and disposed of it, and I just told him how appreciative I was, she was too, so, they're doing a great job, Public Works.
They do do a good job.
A great job.
Good, thank you.
Very proud of them.
A couple of things. One is the in-sent property that we have partnered on, that if you remember, the residents came in that lived behind their.
Ridgefield, where the second. Uh-huh, yeah, in Ridgefield and, and that, that they had, or Harmony Ridge. Harmony Ridge. Actually, they back up Harmony Ridge, backs up to it. Couple of years, or last year, whenever they were here, they had the drainage issue. Well, Anderson went over there and he improved, he improved the problem over there, but now what they've got is they've got the weeds where they're not mowing, where they push the dirt up, and then there's a dip in there and they're not mowing, so all those weeds are now coming through the fence and over into, into their side, and pushing against the fence and everything. So, and I, they sent me some pictures, so I'll send them to you and, and see if that's a code enforcement issue or not.
So they liked the fix, but they didn't like the results of the fix.
Uh-huh, now they got weeds, and they're six foot tall and, and leaning over and stuff, so.
We have trouble.
They're pushing on the fence.
We have trouble making people happy long-term.
That's just like, and then on recycling center, we're not taking glass, but we're taking our recycling to Lexington now. Don't they take glass in Lexington? No, they are.
No, they don't.
They don't.
We're taking.
They don't want it, it jams up there.
Okay, so they're not taking the glass, okay.
And there also, for those of you who have gotten complaints, because I know you all have, from people who have shredded paper and then taken bags of shredded paper to the recycling center, we don't take that either, because Lexington won't take it.
And the clamshell, plastic things too.
Yeah.
I think they.
Oh, the clamshell things, like the salad stuff.
When we were there, they had a big bin of fresh glass.
They do take it, they're not taking it from us.
Right.
They don't take it on a third-party basis.
They don't get rid of it, they don't get anything for it, they have to pay to get rid of it.
So they're, they take it, but they're not taking it from us.
Target takes it.
Target takes it, Co-op takes it.
Co-op in Lexington takes it.
Manchester, Manchester Street.
Glass.
Karen?
I had a lady come in and talk to Karen and I earlier before the meeting, she didn't want to get up and speak. She lives at five oh three South Broadway, and she's right next to the storm drainage ditch, and she said, two thousand fifteen, they flooded, and they came in and cleaned it out, and it got better, and it's filled up again, and she wanted to know if it could get cleaned out again. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't put all of the city storm drainage responsibilities on a schedule to, to inspect and clean out on a regular basis?
When, when we passed our stormwater ordinance, Chuck, and, and we talked about the BMPs, the best management practices, the physical assets, and we're committed to inspect those on a cycle, and we put the city on a five-year cycle, so that we look at twenty percent of our BMPs every year, but it could be a five-year cycle before, if we follow that. Now, there may be more sensitive areas that require a quicker look at something like that, and that may be the property owner that's coming in to see me tomorrow, I'm not sure, did she mention that?
No, we suggested her, for her to talk to you, of course.
One, one of them is, I don't know, may not be this one, but it's one. Oh, this is a different one? Okay.
Yeah, we've cleaned it out before, we've cleaned it out when I was mayor, because they were flooding, and it does help. When it gets dredged, it helps, because its settlement gets in there, but we did say that you're going to have that problem like a rain like Saturday, you're going to have the problem regardless, but the, the times in the past when we have cleaned it out, it has seemed to help, that it's a while before we hear back from them that they're having a big problem, so.
Okay.
But, but she kind of indicated it wasn't necessarily Saturday, but it's been this week that she had the problem, isn't that right?
Okay, and her house number again was?
Five oh three South.
Five oh three.
The storm drainage ditch runs right between her house and the house next door.
Yeah, we're, walk past that thing every day and, and.
Since she lost her herbie in it, it flooded and it just went away.
Down to Royal Spring, yeah.
Anything else, Mark? Anything else to come for the council? If not? Yes, sir.
You spoke to Councilman Thompson about the Italian man in the corner of Highland Court and, and South Broadway.
I said he's from Italy.
Yeah, I said the Italian man, yeah, so, so if, if, I've heard you say, Mayor Brether,